Good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, November the 6th, 2023. Let's call this meeting to order. invocation. It says moment of silence, but I lassoed Mr. Pastor Bobby Walker to share a few words to get us started this evening. Thank you, Bobby.
Let's pray. Holy Father, thank you for tonight and thank you for this great assembly of City Council here and all of members here. Father, I thank you for the wisdom and guidance that you give each to make decision to lead and impact our city in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Perfect. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schleck.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Scott Smith.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Letitia Wilkins.
Second.
Motion and second to excuse Letitia Wilkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, she is excused. Thank you. And next, we have a proclamation for a man who I cannot think of anybody more deserving. If you don't know Bobby, this is the most kind-hearted, hard-working, down-to-earth people you'll ever meet. His soul is just amazing, just a wonderful human being. We love you. And now, if you want to come up, we're...
Sure. Make him cry, then call him up.
Sure. Come on up. I love this man. He's amazing. Do you want to bring your family? You can come on up here. We'll just... I'm going to get a little help from one of your coworkers, who spent a few minutes with you. So I'll start and then my... Oh, come right... That's perfect, right there is great. All right. So this is a proclamation for Pastor Bobby Walker. Whereas Pastor Bobby Walker is a truly remarkable leader who has dedicated decades to various impactful endeavors with an unwavering commitment to the betterment of the community, he has left an indelible mark through his involvement in the annual basketball tournament in the National Blueberry Festival, his work with Bobby Walker Ministries, and other charitable causes.
And whereas his efforts have created a positive environment for countless individuals to engage in healthy competition while learning valuable lessons that extend beyond the court, this year marks the 47th year for the Bobby Walker Basketball Tournament. And whereas Bobby Walker's involvement in ministry work has further demonstrated his commitment to nurturing the spiritual and emotional growth of the community's members through counseling, mentorship, and guidance, he has provided invaluable support to individuals facing personal challenges and seeking spiritual guidance. His ability to connect with people on a deeper level has made a profound impact on the lives he has touched. And?
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize Bobby Walker as a true community leader who has devoted his life to improving the lives of others. We're also going to designate the Friday of National Blueberry Festival as Bobby Walker Day.
Cool.
Well deserved. His contributions continue to create a lasting impact on the community, and I could look forward to many more tournaments. You're truly an amazing man, so I just can't thank you enough for being Bobby Walker. So, thank you. Now, just... Yeah. Get a little photo up. You came to...
So, he will come down if you guys want to see it right there. How I would possibly...
Yep.
Yeah, hook him up. Have him come down here and they'll be... Good morning. Great. Thank you. Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Bobby. Thank you all. And if you haven't met him, I would suggest spend a minute with him. Truly a wonderful man. That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Questions, comments? No, all of them, do you ever say aye?
Aye.
Oh, no, it is approved. Next public comment for items on the agenda. So if you'd like to make any comments, you have up to five minutes. Just come on up, state your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear what you've got to say. Good evening.
David Beanstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard, and I just want to thank the Beach Parking Sticker Committee for their work, and I think that both of the stickers are excellent. I love them both, and I have no preference. Thank you.
Thanks for... Darn it. Well, we're looking for some help. We want to make sure you made the right choice. I mean, there is one right choice, but thank you. Good evening.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. Just following up Mayor Smith, you had indicated in an email to Dave with regard to Consent Agenda 8D about possibly removing it from the agenda, and I hope that there is further discussion, and it's not in the consent agenda as emails for this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, one more. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Callie Marshall. I'm from Vampirian Conservation District.
Quick favor, which I guess I'm... Let's... Can we just... I know... Let me just make sure. Is there anybody else that wants to discuss items on the agenda first? Are we game to let her chat real quick?
Yeah.
Kind of off-topic, but let's get this done right now?
Yeah.
I don't want you to wait. You're good.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion second to allow the... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, and we won't make you wait.
Thank you. I just want to thank the City of South Haven for being the top participant in this year's recycling program with the Conservation District. So, super excited to see the community come out and participate in those events. With that being said, we were able to collect over 10,000 more pounds of electronics from 2022 into 2023. I think a big help was adding that site here in South Haven with the Senior Services Center. So, really happy to partner with them, and we also were able to collect almost 900 pounds of batteries with that drop-off battery recycling program. Again, closest location is at the Senior Services Center. So, really happy to be in the community, and thank you guys for your wonderful participation as we are excited to recycle those items with you all.
Thank you for the update. And just make... I don't know if Case got a card, but anytime you want to come, just call her. We'll get you on the agenda, and you'll have a special spot where we would love to hear what you have to say. So, thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate it, and thanks for all you do. So, okay. Anybody else? I think we were good before, right? Okay. Consent Agenda, items A through H.
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items A through H.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Questions, comments?
I just wanted to say that with regards to 8D, I was able to ask some questions and get more information about that, and I had all my concerns allayed.
Okay. I would tend to agree. There's nothing else than I think most of our questions have been answered. This is roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Takes us to new business. City Council will be asked to approve Special Event Application 2023-47, which is Break the Ice 5K, to be held on February the 3rd, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. until noon on Kalamazoo Street, Lovejoy Street, and Monroe Boulevard, and ending at the Southside Municipal Marina on Water Street.
Make a motion to approve Special Event Application 2023-47, Break the Ice 5K, to be held on February 3rd, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to noon on Kalamazoo Street, Lovejoy Street, and Monroe Boulevard, ending at the Southside Marina on Water Street.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Kate, pretty well explained, but...
Well, thank you. This is a return of the Break the Ice 5K. They also do the Frosty Dash. This is part of the larger event of... I'm sorry, this is at the same time as the Icebreaker Festival. This follows the route that they've used in the years past, which is Kalamazoo Street and the other roads that were mentioned, ending up at the Southside Marina. That's where they have asked to use an electric plug, as well as the use of the Marina Boater Lounge, to kind of get set up for some items, maybe have a warming center there.
Sounds good. Questions, comments? Nothing?
I can't believe it's the 10th year of that Break the Ice 5K.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. All right. Thanks to the organizers, as always, for putting this on. We've got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no? All right. Special Event Application for Break the Ice 5K is approved. Next, City Council is going to get an update from the DDA. Good evening. Information.
Good evening. So, Sue Brock, our DDA Director, will be here to give an informational presentation. This is something that's required twice, I think it's... Is it twice a year? So, we'll just go ahead and let her take off the show. We've got Griffin over here manning the slides for you, so we'll have Sue come on up to the podium, so everyone can hear you speak, and then we'll get started.
Welcome, Sue. How's everything in the downtown?
It's booming.
Booming.
It's great. Yeah, for sure. And if you haven't noticed, we have the holiday lights up. They're beautiful, aren't they?
I had nothing but good comments, so yes.
So, I am Sue Brock. I'm the DDA Director, and so, a mayor and City Council members, I want to thank you for letting me present this. Normally, I don't come up and present it, but I'm so very proud of what the DDA's been doing. So, we are required... The state requires the Downtown Development Authority to hold two informational meetings annually. These informational meetings are meetings held for the purpose of informing the public of goals and direction of the authority, including projects to be undertaken in the coming year. They are not for the purpose of voting on policy, budgets, or any other operational matters. The informational meetings may be held in conjunction with other public meetings of authority or municipality. We had our first meeting on the November DDA meeting, and this will be our second So, the TIF and Development Plan, the goal and direction of the South Haven DDA are defined by the TIF and Development Plan, and TIF is the Tax Increment Financing Plan, first created in 1980 and amended in 2000. The full document is on the city's website and is required by law. So, I did have the link available in your packet, so you can view that as well. Before we get started, though, I think it's really important to understand what the DDA mission statement is. The Downtown Development Authority is to be a leader in helping to fulfill the City of South Haven Municipal Plan through planning, funding, and development of projects within the DDA District, which promote, encourage, and contribute to the overall economic growth and development of the community. The slide that you're looking at now are the DDA Board of Directors. We have some... I just want to make note of our DDA Board. They are exceptional leaders in our community and business. They really take the time to think through any projects that we have in front of us, and how they are utilizing the TIF funds that are available for the community. These positions are also four-year positions. So, every year, the DDA gets together and they set a priority list, and this is just some priorities that is with that development plan and how they want to utilize some project funding that's available. So, in 2022, '23, the priority list is as follows. We will be reevaluating that come 2024. Improvement of existing parking and construction of additional parking, ice rink improvements, Broadway Street streetscape improvements, and downtown public restroom improvements. Not only do we set our priorities, we also have some debt service funds that we need to pay for and take care of. So, the next slide really lists four of the debt service funds that we are still paying on, and the year behind it is when that will get paid off. To kind of recap a little bit of 2023 and what we've been able to do with some of our funding, so in 2023, we were able to purchase 526 Phoenix Street condominium, which you know is the South Haven Visitors Bureau, so we were able to help fund that funding of the back end so that we can do the whole restroom project. We also are replacing the ice rink chiller, which we were able to purchase ahead of when we were going to get it, so we were able to save, you know, a substantial amount of money to purchase it early. We also... Our biggest project this year was the Dykman Park restroom renovations, and if you haven't seen those restrooms, please do so. They are absolutely beautiful. We had a few snags along the way, but I think that overall, moving forward, everybody will be really happy with those. We've increased how many people can get in the restrooms, and we're hoping that it will benefit year-round for everybody, because they are the only restrooms that are open We... Our plan is also the Kalamazoo Huron Street restroom upgrades. It needs new flooring. We need to change some leaks and some walls. We really wanted to get that done before they close this year, but unfortunately, with some other projects, we weren't able to do that, but it will be done in our fiscal year. And then, I'm sure many of you are able to enjoy all the beautiful flower beds downtown, so that's something annually we always fund, and that is a part of our budget as well. We also do the lighting as well. So, the DDA does partner with some community projects. Here's a few of them. The fireplace project at Dykman Park in 2023, it's not saying that we fund everything, but we do contribute to that. The social district that started in October, and then our annual holiday lighting in the Central Business District. So, the DDA does have some district improvements, you know, along with the debt and the priorities that we have. We also take care of general street repairs, streetscape, stormans, sanitary sewers within that district that we have, we're responsible for, so we're also taking care of financing those projects as well. We are looking through our CIP, some of the future projects that we run to really take care of. One is the sidewalk placement at Friends of Goodwill Splash Pad, because if you notice, the splash pad is there, but there's not really a good sidewalk once you park to get up there, and for safety purposes, we thought that would be very beneficial, and that's in our CIP for future. Also, the Broadway Avenue Streetscape is one of our priorities. It's a big project, but we're hoping to always look for funding that we can have to help with that project. And then, the Dykman Park improvement. So, we've made some really great improvements. We've done our restroom. We've got that great fireplace coming, so now we need to kind of look at the whole park, you know, with that kind of... Some of the wall is crumbling, going into the ice rink pavilion. We also have to look at the ice rink pavilion itself, so just that whole Dykman Park improvement. So, the DDA, the City of South Haven, I should say, is a redevelopment-ready community, and the DDA can help attract and retain businesses by facilitating Michigan Economic Development Corporation, known as MEDC, grant funds. So, this past year, we were able to help Farmer's Daughter receive a MEDC grant in the amount of $24,835.80. So, that... Those funds really helped her open her brand-new business. Also, Decadent Dogs moved to their new location, and they were also able to re-save $25,000. $25,000 is the max, so they worked through the DDA and helped facilitate that grant. So, they submit them to me, and then I work through that with them and submit it to the MEDC. We also, this year, had an optimized Main Street Grant Program, which is kind of the technical support for some of our businesses. We've had two businesses that were able to apply for that and get funding, Forever Curious Children's Museum and June Bugs both received that. And then, I did list in the past, the past couple of years, we have some previous MEDC grant funds that we were able to help facilitate. One was for Heart Insurance, Rocket Arcade, and Rockin' Road. Both... All three of those did receive the max of $25,000. We have a brand-new window opening up right now, and so, we have about four businesses that are interested in it. We're only allowed to submit two, and only one gets funded. So, they will work through that project, and we'll be doing that, and hopefully, in February, we'll be able to submit that. So, the DDA really is working on new business, having a vibrant community downtown. So, this is just a list of some of the ribbon cuttings that I was able to attend in 2023, whether it's a new business or maybe a new business wanted to put a new face on their business, just kind of get energized. So, as you see, we do have a very vibrant downtown.
It's pretty impressive.
And because of that, we're able, then, to have new businesses come into our community, which will only grow. And so, we have two new future businesses and developments that are coming to us. One is Consumers Credit Union Project in 2024, and the Locker Redevelopment Project in 2025. These are two recently approved development/ redevelopment projects that will enhance the South Haven already vibrant downtown. So, you figure if we weren't vibrant, these two great businesses probably wouldn't be seeking us out. Part of being a RRC community, one of the requirements that we want to make sure that we are learning and educating and attending workshops or any kind of trainings, our DDA Board is welcome to do that as well. There were two this year that I was able to attend. One was the Michigan Downtown Association Workshop in 2023, and then, just this past Friday, was the Summit, the South Haven Area Summit, which I will be reporting back in December to the DDA. So, I do want to thank you for letting me do this presentation. I'm so very, very proud of the DDA and everything that they're doing, but it is our ambition to build value in the community for the benefit of the community. Projects will be financed through the Tax Increment Financing, which is better known as TIF, and will proceed with or initiate it as monies are available and budget allows. So, we all have some great ideas and great plans, but we can only do it if the monies are there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate it.
Very good report.
All right. And next, City Council is going to be asked to select the 2024 to 2027 Beach Parking Sticker from the top two designs selected by the Beach Parking Sticker Committee.
Well, thank you, Mayor. The Beach Parking Sticker Committee, which is a committee of three, it's the mayor, and the mayor pro temp, and the DDA Director. We've had a number of submissions from Gen Sis Drunk, local artists, as well as our own Luke Thompson. I know the committee looked at all of the submissions, plus some that we had in... That we haven't used before, and we've narrowed them... Rather, the committee has narrowed them down to a number of designs. So, if Griffin can put on the screen, we have two designs for you to consider. We've got B, which is the South Haven Beach Parking Pass, very vibrant, very colorful. This will be the horizontal. And then, item design E, which is similar to the vertical design that we have now, but a very unique color we haven't seen before, which is that nice turquoise. So, I know the council has a very hard decision before them to decide either B or E.
All right. I can open it up. You know, this is going to be to Armus. There's six of us, so this has created a problem.
It's going to be a tie, yeah. And just to Luke and to Jennifer, all of them were really, really good. It was a tough decision that the mayor and I narrowed it to three, and I don't know how we got it down to two, because they were all really, really good.
They were good, yeah.
All had neat qualities, just really great stuff.
The fun thing is, is that whatever you choose, that the other design that is not chosen could be in the queue for next time.
That's true.
I like the horizontal one. I think it's different and fun. I mean, I like both of them, but that one draws my attention.
I had the same thought. I like them both, but the one... The B one, I thought, was preferred.
I'm in the B camp as well.
I know. I know where you are.
I'll make a motion to choose B.
Ooh, all right. I think we had a motion. We got a second, a third, and a fourth. Okay, I think I'm doing the math here. All right. We've got a motion and a second to approve.
Yep.
That's exactly. Choose the sticker design B, right? Correct?
Correct.
Any more discussion?
I was just wondering if it's ever been an idea to have the community vote on it at any point, like in the future? I think that could be kind of fun.
They could apply for the committee, right?
I actually would think that...
I would say, absolutely. This year, we talked about, again, just putting out a little quick survey.
A poll.
Yeah. We talked about...
I just think it'd be fun.
And I'm in favor of that, but it's super hard. They're so...
I can imagine.
Yeah. So, right. So, all right, we got a motion. We got a second to approve Design B. All of them, do you ever say aye?
Aye.
Oh, no? Oh, it's unanimous. All right, we got it. Thanks, everybody. Next, we're going to get a code enforcement update. Griffin, is that you?
It is. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to keep it pretty brief, but I wanted to bring before you all a short code enforcement update. As many of you will likely recall, we did this for the first time last year shortly after the City of South Haven hired a full-time code enforcement officer to respond to citizen concerns, conduct property inspection, and pursue appropriate code enforcement action, primarily for nuisance activity and property maintenance requirements. So, what's included in your packet is a short summary of the city's methodology and purpose behind code enforcement here in South Haven. Quick summary of some of the common enforcement actions that are and can be taken, everything starting from an educational conversation. These are informal, non-documented interactions, but really involved around our purpose of trying to educate people on the regulations that we have in place in town, and everything moving up from courtesy notices, formal warning letters, all the way to issuing of municipal civil infraction citations, or commonly referred to as tickets. Before I get a little bit into the data, I do just want to clarify for you all and for the public that the data in this report is specific to the efforts of the Building Department, the full-time code enforcement officer responding to nuisance activity and property maintenance concerns. So, this is, I think, what we commonly think of as garbage bins, lawns and weeds, debris, inoperable vehicles. This is not including beach safety enforcement, downtown parking enforcement, or the enforcement of the short-term rental ordinances. Those are kind of separate programs that I do know we bring kind of separate updates to you all at different points throughout the year. But then, included here, kind of broken down into a couple of different areas, we have total enforcement actions going back from 2020 through September of 2023. Please notice that, that the 2023 numbers are just really three-quarters of the year. So, really, we are on track to be relatively consistent to the enforcement numbers from the year before. The table immediately under the big one, it's just a condensed version of the previous table that has, I don't know, a dozen or so categories, really broken down into the primary enforcement areas that we see, debris, lawn and weeds, trash bins, and then other. Then, broke into a couple of different tables, just to make it easier to understand, hopefully showing the trends in some of the enforcement activity we've been able to do. We then move from total enforcement activity to tickets, because I know that's something we get questions about, and I know from interacting with all of you, you know, we hear from is, you know, is the city actually writing tickets? Is the city taking violations seriously if they're not getting addressed? And the answer is yes. Again, as I've said in the past, our goal is not to write tickets. It's not to punish people, but it's to bring people into compliance, and sometimes, a ticket is a tool that is needed to encourage compliance. So, a few other different ways of breaking down that data that hopefully helps the community and City Council really understand those general code enforcement activities that are done throughout the year. But then, I also want to draw your attention to a couple pictures and an email that was attached to the end of the code enforcement update. I included this this year because I also want for City Council to understand some of the work that's done beyond the numbers. It's easy enough to look at code enforcement numbers and see this many tickets and this many activities, and it's helpful to understand, I guess, one side of it. But... primary enforcement areas that we see, debris, lawn and weeds, trash bins, and then other. Then broke into a couple of different tables, just to make it easier to understand, hopefully showing the trends in some of the enforcement activity we've been able to do. We then move from total enforcement activity to tickets, because I know that's something we get questions about. And I know from interacting with all of you, you know, we hear from is, you know, is the city actually writing tickets? Is the city taking violations seriously if they're not getting addressed? And the answer is yes. Again, as I've said in the past, our goal is not to write tickets. It's not to punish people, but it's to bring people into compliance. And sometimes a ticket is a tool that is needed to encourage compliance. So a few other different ways of breaking down that data that hopefully helps the community and city council really understand those general code enforcement activities that are done throughout the year. But then I also want to draw your attention to a couple of pictures and an email that was attached to the end of the code enforcement update. I included this this year because I also want for city council to understand some of the work that's done beyond the numbers. It's easy enough to look at code enforcement numbers and see this many tickets and this many activities, and it's helpful to understand, I guess, one side of it. But there's also the other side of kind of these bigger, longer-term, ongoing enforcement issues that can really be a detriment to our community. And we have one example included in here that I won't mention property addresses or really areas, because I don't intend to, you know, to embarrass or really call anybody out, but more just to show that there are other issues that are addressed by the code enforcement team that they take a long time. It can cause, you know, it can take kind of a freak situation to make us aware of it if we're not being brought into it either by our patrols or by residents letting us know. Quite often, some of these situations involve legal efforts and going to court action, and sometimes even resolution by the city itself. So a letter that's included in the packet talks about, you know, an ongoing blight issue that had been going on for years and years and years. Ultimately, earlier this year, it caused a fire, which is when the fire department shays, let us know that a situation had gotten to the point that we needed to get more active in. We worked with the city's prosecuting attorney to actually take it to court, ultimately got a court order where we were able to go on the property and get it cleaned up. In those situations, the city does front the money for the cleanup, and then we were able to get reimbursed over time by either a court order or putting liens on properties going through the tax process. But you can see through the pictures included in the packet, you know, kind of an astonishing situation that we find in our community from time to time, and kind of the before and after, and really the amount of work it takes to get to something like this. So I know for a lot of people, they may view code enforcement as, code enforcement as weeds and garbage cans and things that from time to time may feel minor, but that's just one piece of the work that is done to try to make our community a special, clean, and safe place for people to live. I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any questions, but otherwise, thank you for the opportunity to bring these 2023 code enforcement update to you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions?
Looks like we're getting better at mowing lawns and not so good at the trash cans.
Say, Griffin, could you just kind of talk through the trash can thing? Because that's the one, because you mentioned it's a courtesy notice. People, if something comes from the city, people freak out. And it's sometimes, like you said, it's just a reminder to get in compliance.
Sure, yeah. With garbage cans, it can be a number of different things. I mean, like a lot of things, we do have a waste management ordinance that dictates a number of different things, but one of the things that it outlines is how far before your pickup day and how long after your pickup day garbage bins can be left at the curb. And particular, I can't believe it's been over two years now, but, you know, particularly going through a transition from Best Way, excuse me, from Republic to Best Way disposal, the changing of garbage days for some people, I think there's been a learning curve just to recognizing some of the changes there. But one of the things that is done when people are found to be leaving their garbage can out too long is that the code enforcement officer will attempt to address that. And that can come in, the first step would be in the form of a courtesy notice. So someone would get a letter going, your garbage can's out, it can't be out, you need to not do this. But if that continues and you go through courtesy notice, formal warning letter, all the way to a ticket, there are situations when people are getting ticketed. I can tell you all, if someone's receiving a ticket for leaving their garbage can out, it's not the first time that's happened. We definitely understand that mistakes happen. We're all people. Sometimes people are out of town, sometimes people just forget. In those situations, that's exactly why someone's receiving a warning or a courtesy notice. The other attempt with letters and really enforcement action in general is quite often it's to get people's attention and have them follow up with us so we can work through whatever we need to work through. So if for whatever reason you feel like you're receiving a letter or some kind of enforcement in error, please never hesitate to reach out to our team and tell us what's going on, and we'll walk through our side of it, and we can figure out some kind of resolution. But the other piece about enforcement of garbage bins that, you know, is something city council could always consider is, we do know there are people who don't necessarily agree with the enforcement or the ordinance that's in place. Our code enforcement team is obligated to, you know, enforce the ordinance that we have in place. They don't get to pick and choose if they're enforcing it, who they're enforcing it, to when they're enforcing it. So, you know, if it ever becomes a situation where city council wants to take a look at that ordinance, that would be appropriate and a process you all could decide to undergo. But until or to that time, you know, I know our team's going to do the best they can to try to, you know, fairly enforce the ordinances that we have in place.
I think what you're saying is, if you see our code enforcement people out there, please be nice to them. They're just doing their job. Don't take it out on them.
They are just doing their job to enforce the ordinances we have in place.
And you said when I was looking for that, that first notice, you know, you get that letter and it's official station area, and oh, it's just a courtesy notice. It's just a gentle reminder, you know, because like you said, we understand life happens, you know, so, hey, hey, you forgot this time, you're out of town, whatever. Please try harder. And so it's just a courtesy notice. No reason to get stressed. Okay.
Anything else?
And I really would just like to thank the building department team. Rick Loper has been our code enforcement officer for almost two years now and really just does an amazing job, not only doing the hard parts of being a code enforcement officer, which is quite often telling people maybe what they don't want to hear, but he also does a really good job interacting with members of the public and has really been able to start building relationships around town. And that is instrumental when it comes to resolving some of these bigger, longer-term issues. So I just, I really want to give him a shout out. He works incredibly hard for this community.
He does. Like you said, he's got a perfect personality for that job. He's very pleasant, but also firm. So, very good. Thank you. If there's nothing else, we are going to get an update from our interim public works director, Mr. Quentin Clark. We got to be nice to him. It's his first time up here. Good evening, Quentin.
Good evening, Mayor, council people. So just got a quick update for you here. Won't take too much time. The 12th Avenue Substation Project is complete, Phase One. We're looking at it to be energized by November 17th, but they want to warm up some of the components there. So before it's utilized, it'll be not until after Thanksgiving. AMI project with electric meters, so we're still slated for spring of '24. We've got about half of the meters in that we need right now, so look forward to that. Solar development, still working with GRP and MPPA to develop or put together some power purchasing agreements and interconnect agreements between the city and Soul America. That update should be coming to BPU by the end of this month. Wastewire Treatment Plant Project with Shawsa, bond documents are signed. The project's supposed to be getting underway, it says this fall, but I got an update from Jeremy after I put this together, and looks like we're slated for sometime first of the year. So I look forward to that, too. Water reliability and asset management plan, we're still working with Shaw's on that. They had, or I'm sorry, Fishback, they had a loss in their, one of their engineers, so kind of put them behind, so taking a little extra time with that. Drinking water state revolving fund project, so we got about $27.6 million in funding for a new 1 million gallon elevated tank to replace the deteriorating standpipe, new booster station, mains associated with, and some lead service line replacement within the city. So we're going to, looks like we're bonding just a little over $10 million for that project. Most of the rest of it's funded. Water service line verifications, we're still working with Comptons to verify service line materials within the system as required by Eagle. And then that helps us identify the number of lead service lines that we actually need to have replaced with the state water, or state revolving fund. Kids Corner Phase Two is looking to begin sometime this fall, hopefully towards the end of the month. Working with Comptons, they've acquired, they're ordering the new boat for handicap access, so should be seeing some more work being done there, prepping for the boat, the path around, and a couple of our sites to prepare for future expansion. Also, what I don't have on here is the DPW locker room. So we got a proposal for design development for construction and bidding documents, and it's under staff review right now. And so hopefully we'll have an update, you know, in two weeks for that. Something to present to you guys. So, any questions?
I'd want. I saw the leaf trucks out, the VAC truck's been out and about. Last year, there was a gap in some of the areas, and we've taken some steps to make sure.
Yeah, so we were going ward by ward last year, and this year, we decided to use a different approach and use the same patterns that we use to plow streets. So it's a little more effective, we're hitting the areas a little quicker, and it's also a great training tool for the new staff that we have on site or on our team for plowing as well. So it's kind of killing two birds with one stone. Haven't gotten any complaints yet, you know, so, and staff was actually out Saturday, it was the first Saturday they worked, we knew it was going to be a nice weekend, so it was important to get out there and try to stay ahead. So we're going to, you'll probably see an expansion on time, the next week or so, be probably working 10-hour days throughout the week, and then Saturday, eight hours just to keep up, so.
And both trucks are running right now.
Yeah, they're both running right now. Fingers crossed, let's keep it that way, so.
I'll just say the substation project, if you haven't seen any of it going on, it's quite impressive.
Yeah, yeah.
I stopped and just watched them the other day. Just get a little tour done, I'm going to call Mr. May. It'd be just quite a fascinating project. You haven't seen the size of the lines they're throwing up?
Oh, yeah.
Like by US tarp and whatnot? They're massive.
Yep, yep.
I mean, very impressive, so. All right. Thank you for the update. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, and now we are to public comment. So anyone in the audience who'd like to be heard on items not on the agenda, come on up, state your name, state your address. You have up to five minutes, and then we'll be out of here, because we have an election tomorrow, so.
Oh, yeah, poor Megan.
So Megan's ready to get working.
Good evening, Annie. Annie Brown, 114 Michigan Avenue. Today is Election Hero Day. It's a day to recognize and thank our election workers and our clerks, and I want to thank Megan Kiker for her excellent work, which has been going on for more than seven months, and she has kept everything running smoothly. And the people at the county clerk's office in Paw Paw call her a rock star. So thank you so much for everything. You've heard about me as our next mayor, you've heard about me as a 13-year school board member, and tonight, I'm going to tell you about who Annie Brown is as a person and a leader. I am welcoming, because when I moved here in 1985, I was welcomed by everyone from store clerks to CEOs. I knew immediately that this was my home. Because of those experiences, I feel it is my duty to share that South Haven tradition of welcoming strangers. I welcome everyone here to call this our town home, whether you start out sleeping in your car, or whether you are moving your multimillion-dollar business here. South Haven welcomes you. I was raised by a World War II veteran and a mother who had the balls to stand up in the middle of church and scold our priest because he criticized our mayor and our village council in the tiny town of Hillman, Michigan. Because how I was raised, I will demand excellence from our city council and from our city staff. In fact, I chew up mediocrity and spit it out. But most importantly, I will demand excellence from myself, because when people elect us, when taxpayers are working two and three jobs to pay for city services, we owe them our absolute best. We must start with our city staff. My first goal as mayor will be to meet the custodians, the desk clerks, and the committee boards. I will make sure our city employees, from police chief to the people who drive the beach cleaners, get the respect and dignity they deserve. I will be the voice for workers who fear retaliation because a leader works with their staff, not the other way around. In the words of Alan Patton, "I will not be afraid to defend the weak because of the anger of the strong, nor will I be afraid to defend the poor because of the anger of the rich." Today, I was going door to door in Ward One, and a man told me he's voting for me, and he looked me right in the eye, and he said, "You put the grit in integrity." In closing, I would like to thank Mayor Scott Smith for his dedication over the years, and I look forward to building off of his work. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership, hard work, and your care that you have shown to our community and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks, Annie. Appreciate it. Have a good night. Anybody else? Go ahead, one. Good evening, Aaron.
Aaron Cox, 914 Center Street. I just have a kind of a question. First of all, I want to say, Griffin was talking about, you know, the code enforcement. You know, when you change garbage people, the older people like me, that's who affected most. You know, we were so used to putting everything out on Sunday night, Monday morning, no matter what it was, a couch or chairs or anything, and, you know, they would pick it up. We didn't have to have two days and all of that. It affected us more, because we were so used to, you know, I've been in my house, same house, for 50, I think 55 years or something like that, since '73. And I've been going through the same thing, doing the same way, and if you hear complaints about it, it'd be older people like me that are affecting most. And also, on the code enforcement, there, Everett Park, that grass is never cut during the summer. And it been questioned why that grass don't be cut. I talked with the code enforcement, but he was telling me something about that, you know, they did ticket the people, and something about if they cut it back, oh, have to cut back, I think, four feet, and that's all it had to be cut back. But if you go through there, you see that, how tall that grass is at Everett Park over there. And my question is, and other people's question is, if I have a 50 by 100 lawn, and if I only cut my grass back four feet and leave the rest of it tall, I'm going to get a ticket? So why'd they get away with leaving their grass that tall all year round? That's just my question. I just have a question about, you know.
We can get back. Okay, there's the specific spots where it has to do with feet off a right of way or off a street, so I don't know the specific.
That's right. I know that some lots that are of a certain size, the border has to be mowed, but the entire lot, if it's several, I can't remember the amount, but I think it's one or two, over two acres, I believe, the edges have to be, I think it's 10 feet off the sidewalk, or the right of way has to be mowed. So I do know, I believe that tickets were issued with Everett Park, I believe.
Yeah, because my question, it's in the city, that's like my problem would be, so if I would have to cut mine, which I should, and they should have to cut there.
Was there anybody else? All right, go ahead, one's going twice. So, city manager comments.
All right, I'll keep it brief. I know Megan has a very long day tomorrow. What is it, 18 hours? Sorry. Because I know Megan will be here tomorrow at 5:30, and of course, if you know, the polls will be open at 7:00 a.m., and they'll close at 8:00 p.m. So wish Megan and her crew a good day and happy voting for everyone. Just some updates on Dyckman Parks, Sue kind of hit on it. The bathrooms are open, the bathrooms are open, I believe, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. They are our only bathrooms that are open year round. They are the only heated bathrooms that we have in town, so those are open for people to use. If you have not seen, after the boo-bash, we have started working on the construction of the ice rink. So if you see lots of dirt over there, it's planned. That's where the ice rink will be going. Fireplaces continuing to be erected. We do know that there might be some supply chain issues, so while we are hoping to have a Thanksgiving opening, we're going to have to see how things work out with supply chain. Lastly, I did want to thank the Shara Board, the South Haven Area Rec Authority, with working with the Van Buren County Road Commission to get more signage placed along Blue Star Highway. For those of you who use the Van Buren Trail, there's more signage out there showing where there is trail crossings. So those are my comments, and thank you, everyone, for their work tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Kate? City Council, I'll start on my right.
I'd like to make a couple of comments about the election tomorrow. When I first decided to run for mayor, I made a decision that I was not going to use my position sitting up here in city council to promote myself. My opponent decided to use this room to do that, and that's her prerogative. My only concern is, we've had some serious discussions on city councils, we always do, and my opponent has not decided to address those in her speaks, in her speeches. and my opponent has not decided to address those in her speaks, in her speeches. Again, her prerogative. I do want to compliment the people in this city because in my entire life, one of the things I'll never forget is knocking on the doors in this town. I have been welcomed with every single home I've been to. People have been courteous, been welcoming, have invited me in their homes and talking to me. It has been one of the best experiences I've ever had. One of the real advantages is when I knock on doors, I ask the question, what do you want to know about me as a candidate? And secondly, what do you think about the city? Good, bad, or indifferent? And the answers I've gotten have made me tonight a better city council person, whether I'm mayor or not. It's also made me a better mayoral candidate, from what I've learned. It is sad that there are a few people that have taken upon themselves to be blatantly insulting and to say half-truths, but they do not represent this community and it's only a few people have done so. Running for mayor is a serious business and it takes serious discussions. I've tried to always state my position running for mayor, both in the important issues dealing with this city and about myself, so the people in this room and in this city can make an intelligent decision who best represents them. So tomorrow, we get to practice democracy. We all get to vote. My hope is that we get a big turnout because win or lose, whoever is chosen, I'd like it to be from the majority of people in this town, not from a small number of people. So my last word to all of you, please vote tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you. George?
So along those same lines, I heard a good quote recently, "Democracy is not a spectator sport." And it reminded me about a conversation I had with somebody who recently became a citizen and was voting for the first time. And to hear the excitement in their voice just reminded me how important our role is in this process and in the democracy. So like, like my neighbor here said, please participate, go out and vote. Thank you.
I hope election day goes well and smoothly for Megan and the election workers and that we have a really great turnout. I just wanted to ask or say trick or treat. Obviously Halloween was a little crazy weather-wise, but all the kids were out, it was super fabulous. We just went around the block, so I didn't see a ton of action on Phoenix, but I did see it come up a few times about whether the police were present at all and where they were stationed. And I don't really know the answer to that, but I'm just wondering if next year we could potentially have that be more of a thing, working with the police department to be in the kind of busy areas in town.
Do you have a specific area in mind?
Just like Phoenix and Hubbard, Pearl, a little bit down farther by Cherry, probably.
I can look into it. I can tell you that we cannot close Phoenix.
Right.
But we can be present if, if we're looking into that.
Okay, yeah. I just thought it'd be nice to have on our radar if there was a way to do that for next year, just having them even out so they're visible.
I'll investigate and see where we're at.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Flashing lights.
Yeah.
Slows cars down.
Yeah, I think so. That was it for me.
You always want to be the last kid at our house when my wife and I are done with the candy because we don't want any candy left, so that last kid, you always want to be the last kid at our house. Congratulations to Bobby Walker. I didn't realize, 47 years. I know when I got hired 27 years ago, talking to the basketball coach, they're like, we already got, we already got this guy here. He runs this tournament. It's great. The kids are already into basketball and he was so excited and 47 years, that's why. Good luck to Megan, as everyone else has said, important job and she does a great job of it. The, and I like the mayoral, both candidates talked about how welcoming it is here and that's kind of my message, the point I'm, I'm going for. As a history teacher, I kick myself that I didn't pick my grandfather's brain enough when I had the time and so I'm better at it now. And I ran into my mom and a bunch of her girlfriends and we got talking about, this was a couple of years ago, and got, talking about elections and they were talking about how important elections are. And one of the great things they said was, it's different now. And I said, what do you mean it's different now? It's well, in the old days, you know, in October, you'd start talking about elections and you'd talk to your neighbors and maybe you didn't agree and this, that, and the other thing, and you put your signs out, but then November, you'd go vote and then after, the day after the election, you put all those signs away and you went back to being neighbors again. So I hope that your candidate wins, whoever that candidate is, but then after tomorrow, Wednesday, when Wednesday comes, remember that we're all still neighbors and we all want to get along and, you know, even if your person doesn't win. So I hope we keep that in mind. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say Clark Gruber's joke every year, as they say in Chicago, vote early, vote often.
Right on, right on.
Those are my comments.
Good comments.
I don't think I can add to any of that, so I'll just close with nothing, other than thank you to our city clerk.
There you go. I got to go quick. We got to go by eight. All right, we're going to have to talk to our clock fixer. I think we got here at eight and we're leaving at five to seven, but it's okay. Hey, I didn't want to fire you, you know, because, anyway, so yeah, so again, congrats to Bobby. Megan, thank you. Megan, you, after we're all done tomorrow, what do you get to do with the results?
I will be driving them out to Paw Paw going forward. We cannot transmit results at the end of the night, so I will be driving out to Paw Paw to hand deliver the results. And on that topic, the results will be unofficial, results will be posted on our city website because it won't be posted on the election reporting website that it typically is. And then the doors are always open as well, so the public is welcome. I'll have them posted in the hallway as well, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. I was, I ran into one of our former young Boy Scouts who made me very happy that day because we were just talking about his outstanding public school education. He then proceeded to college and he's now an engineer hired by Rukustic here in town, which is really nice, kind of a, the whole follow-through story. And on that note, also just want to kudos to staff, our economic development team. We've had some real good, positive site visits. We've been out to Grace. That expansion is very impressive. We've been to Revere to see some, we watched them, they can cut an inch thick of metal with a laser, which is kind of fascinating. It sounds like something from a movie, right? Like a laser can cut an inch thick of metal. If you've ever seen an inch thick of metal, it's impressive. Spencer Manufacturing, and we also had the privilege to go and visit the parent company of now Sherman's Ice Cream up at Hudsonville. And let's just say, we're in good hands and that's going to, that's a fantastic merger. So just such good, you know, kind of business activity continues to happen here in town. So thanks to staff for being amazing. And then other than, go vote. So we're out of here before eight. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Good evening.